Yeah, lighting. Scott.
Did you get my email?
Yes. You like me?
Special call meeting. Special call meeting of Anderson County Board of Education will come to order. I guess we need to do the pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Portwood, would you report?
I will. The evaluation for the Director of Schools has been done and the Director of Schools scored a perfect score of three out of three.
Thank you.
And he's not even here.
He did pass. Do we need to do anything else on that at this time or does it come up under personnel?
I think the rest would come up under personnel. I would add, just on behalf of District Three, every school in my district was a reward school this time for the first time in the history and I think Dr. Parrott, Mr. Deal had a huge role in accomplishing that. So, we're very pleased to have him in the game.
Anything else on the evaluation of the Director? Meeting is adjourned. Do we have to wait?
So, you call the regular meeting to order and then the first guy out of business will be...
Me again.
Regular meeting of Anderson County Board of Education will come to order. Ms. Portwood.
The public, I'll let you know that every year we do an evaluation on the Director of Schools. This year, Dr. Parrott scored a perfect score of three out of three, which is not surprising. We think he does an excellent job. But as the Personnel Chairman, I so moved that we renew Dr. Parrott's contract beginning July 1st, 2020, for four years with pay raise.
Moving second, we renew Director of Schools' contract for four years beginning...
July 1st.
July the 1st. Discussion. Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Recognition of guests.
Dr. Burrow, tonight we have for something good, we have our employees, our Certified Employees of the Year, and I would like to take this opportunity to recognize them and give them something. And as we do this, if there is someone, an administrator or someone from the school that would like to come up and say something nice about that individual and introduce them to the Board, okay? I would appreciate that. The first person that we want to recognize tonight is Hannah Collins from Grand Oaks Elementary School.
Hello. I have the honor of introducing Ms. Hannah Collins, Corlou Collins, to you. She's a second grade teacher at Grand Oaks Elementary School and we, I would describe her as being the Chick-fil-A of teachers. Sorry. She's just amazing, always has a smile on her face, always there to give a hug to students. Her lessons are amazing and laser focused and she analyzes data like nobody I've ever seen and it's just amazing. We are so fortunate to have her at Grand Oaks. Hannah Collins.
Our next person is Rachel Mandarin from Norris Middle School, who is our Norris Middle, who is our Middle School Teacher of the Year. And Mr. Cummins is going to say a few words.
Just want to say that we're very proud to have Rachel as part of our staff. This is her seventh year at Norris Middle School. Her first five years at Norris, she taught English, Language Arts in sixth grade, and this is her second year in eighth grade history. She's very passionate, she loves her students, she loves her topic, and we're just, like I said, very blessed to have her as, as a part of Norris Middle School, so.
Congratulations. Our next teacher is our High School Teacher of the Year, and Mr. Downs is going to introduce Donovan Harrington.
Hey, I'm here to recognize Mr. Harrington. Donovan does a great job in our Science Department, an absolute rock star teacher. Kids love him, high rigor. Just to give you a stat on his performance, Donovan does our Advanced Placement Environmental Science, which is a very hard, very rigorous course at our school. The global pass rate in that class for students who pass the test, get college credit, all those good things, is forty-nine percent. His students last year, eighty-seven percent. So, that tells you a little bit about what he does and how well of a job he does. So, I'm very proud of Donovan, Donovan Harrington, Anderson County High School Science Teacher.
All right. The next person that we want to recognize is our SRO of the Year, and I'm going to ask our Director of Safety, Mr. Fogarty, come up, and Sergeant Wendy Garrison, the supervisor, come up.
And we'll also ask the Sheriff to come up. So, yeah, come on. He's here and, and he needs to be a part of this also. Rusty, come on up. Now, I got a thing and it's John Carr. I didn't know who John Carr was. Rusty Carr is the one we've got. His real name is John Rusty Carr, and I kept sending it back, said we don't have a John Carr. They said, I guess Chick-fil-A, I don't know if I call you Mr. Clean, but this, this gentleman is, is such a blessing to, to our school system. He has been at CRCS now for two years?
Second year.
Second year. And, and in dealing with it, he, he has a tremendous rapport with these children and, and just does a tremendous job of working with, with that school. We stole him from the Highway Patrol to Anderson County Sheriff's Department and then to the school system. So, so he is tremendous and, and brings a wealth of, of knowledge and experience with him. So, Rusty, congratulations. We're so glad you're here.
Just briefly, Rusty is, is really the epitome of what we're looking for in an SRO. He has a real passion for those kids up there. He, at one point, come talk to me about, because he also one of his, another one of his talents that he picked up from the Tennessee Highway Patrol's Traffic Enforcement, right? So, when he's out on one of the breaks and we have speeder complaints, I send him out with Bannock and, and they handle those things. But we had talked about possibly coming out to the road at one time, but at the end of the day, man, he is just so connected to those kids. And as you guys know, he started the Explorer post for us, for the Anderson County Sheriff's Department, and it's just been tremendous success. And to tell you how far back I go with Rusty, we worked at Clinton together, but I actually sold him his first two cars. A Fox Toyota, and he still likes me.
All right. The next person I want to do the honors of introducing, Mr. Downs, would you come up please? Mr. Downs has hurt his back. He normally is, he's normally, normally very athletic acting and everything like that, but he's, he's kind of down in his back. I tell everybody, Mr. Downs is the principal of Anderson County High School, which I used to be the principal of Anderson County High School, and when I was the principal, I hired him as my baseball coach. And I tell everybody, and I mean this, and I know this hurts Mrs. Russell's feelings when I say this, but he's the best hire that I ever made. And not only because he was a great baseball coach and I was a coach and stuff like that, so we connected on that level, but this gentleman takes everything seriously and he has the gift of trying to get people to do things without making them mad. He's just an excellent leader and I think, I think very highly of him and I think he's very deserving of this award this year. Congratulations.
Straighten up.
And last but not least, is our Administrator of the Year, Ms. Kim Tow. Kim Tow came to us, how many years ago, Ms. Tow? Is this your third year? Yes, your fourth year. She was an administrator in Knox County. She's another former high school principal, served at Karnes High School, and she's also worked at their alternative school and she was, worked in special education over in Knox County. And when she came over here, she brought a wealth of knowledge. You know, we have, we've always had a tradition of having a very fine special education department in here, going back several years and back several directors, but Ms. Tow has elevated it to a new level and has done an excellent job here in Anderson County, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Rick. I might mention, Dr. Parrott is out, denied for sick leave. We won't discuss what he's having. But he'll be back tomorrow. Persons to be heard. Being none, approval of the agenda. Moving second, approval of the agenda, discussion. If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda. I, we have one request for change, Joe.
I need to make a change on the policies for second reading. I want to delay the reading for 3.206, Community Use of Schools, for further discussion for our next Policy Committee meeting. And we need to add the delete, the addition to delete 1.704, which is being replaced by 1.901.
Any objections to those changes? With the changes mentioned, do I hear a motion, we approve the consent agenda? Moving second, we approve consent agenda, discussion. Not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Comments from the Chair? We, the Board had a Board Retreat last weekend at Pigeon Forge. We discussed several things. It was, Ms. Tammy, what's Tammy's name? Kristen facilitated the meeting. We discussed the report of the Board's self-evaluation, the five-year strategic plan. We reviewed the system report card, did the Superintendent's evaluation and discussed the budget. Anything that the Board would like to add about the retreat?
I thought it was a great retreat.
I thought it was the best one we'd had. We, we did invite the press, but they, they failed to show up. But it was a very good meeting. Dr. Parrott gave, had a staff meeting yesterday afternoon, discussed the coronavirus situation. Things are sort of in limbo. Have we put out the changes that were added or are you going to do that tonight?
Do you mean to the plan?
To the plan.
Yeah, during the Director's Report, I'll inform the Board of some of the things that we, what we've done up to date.
The only thing was the canceling the field trips.
Is there any way that we know how many of our students have access to the Internet? Do we know that information or?
Have had tests?
I don't have access to the Internet. I think Mr. Mr. Haney, when we had the meeting the other day, we were discussing student access to the Internet. We are planning, Ms. Langenberg, if we have to call off school, that our high school and middle school students will use the one-to-one Chromebooks that we have to do some Google Classroom instruction. And there were some concerns about the numbers of students who have access to the Internet, but I'll let Mr. Wade Haney address that.
We have done polls in the past and up at that time, we had around over eighty percent of our students would have access to the Internet at home. Every year, we also hand out the Comcast free and reduced rate, so parents can get access to nine-dollar Internet where Comcast has service. Of course, we're never going to get to one-hundred percent, but the procedures we have in place is we're going to try to cover every kid, of course, with a Chromebook, and those that have Internet at home will be able to use that. Some of the contention plans we've looked at are paper packets for students who don't have access at home. Thank you.
That was discussed at the meeting. That's all I've got. For the... What the?
Sick leave incentive.
Sick leave incentive. I have Heather Cantrell, Fairview Teacher. Linda?
Carrie Doggery, Dutch Valley Custodian.
I have Betty Phillips at Clinton High School in Child Nutrition.
Taffy Ridner from Grand Oaks, a Head Start teacher.
And I have Candace Clayburn, Clinton Middle School teacher.
And I have April Myers and she's the Curriculum Specialist at Clinton Middle.
I have Rebecca Kent, who is a teacher at Norwood Middle.
And I have April Melton, teacher at Clinton Middle.
Director of Report. Dr. Burrow, to give you an update on what we've been doing this week, we have been monitoring the, the growth in the concern related to the coronavirus. And last week, we met initially and gave members of the, the Directors a copy of our influenza and pandemic plan. And then we asked the, the members that we gave the plan to, to take it with them and review it, and then we met again yesterday for two hours, and we went over the plan and everyone's assignments. What we've done to date is we've tried to educate our communities and our schools on things that we learned from the CDC about practice, good health practices like washing your hands, covering your mouth when you sneeze. We've sent out videos and copies of posters to be hung up into the schools to ensure that the kids are being educated on how to do those things as well. Yesterday, after talking with all the Directors, Dr. Parrott made a decision to cancel all field trips until further notice, okay? We know that that's going to cause a lot of consternation in the community because a lot of people have paid money to go on these field trips, but we felt like, after listening to different people, Dr. Burrow being one, and several other people on the, our administrative team, we felt like that was the best move moving forward to protect our students and our teachers. And we will, we will reevaluate that after spring break as to what we need to do for the rest of the school year because we have a lot of field trips coming up. The other thing that we discussed doing is trying to limit the contact that children who are symptomatic or teachers have by doing away with incentives for perfect attendance. Don't want to put pressure on parents and kids to send their kids to school if they're feeling bad. We've advised our Principals that we want them to set up a place within the school where children can go if they become symptomatic, if they start coughing, sneezing, or displaying other symptoms of having the flu or the coronavirus, like a temperature. If children show up at school, which sometimes they do, their parents put them on the bus or drop them off even though they're sick, we're going to try to screen those kids and find out who they are and not allow them to mix and mingle with other kids and put them in a safe place and call the parents to have them come, come and get them. We're constantly monitoring what's going on across the state with the Health Department, with the State Department of Education, to see what other schools are being closed and what other schools, what they're doing. And I'm sure that it's, Dr. Parrott will minute by minute be evaluating things to determine whether to make a recommendation to you all, whether we need to close school at any time in the future. But when he left this afternoon, school is on for tomorrow. We don't have any evidence of any infection around here, so we feel like it's still safe for our children to go to school, but that could change at any time. Athletics are not being, unless we close schools, and if Dr. Parrott has stated, if we do close schools, we will also cancel athletic competitions as well. But at this time, we're not canceling any, any athletic competitions. Now, if we had students that were traveling out to maybe the national area to participate in the state tournament, which those other school systems have, we might reevaluate something like that. And we've, we've, I've, we've talked to the schools. Mr. Snyder, can you confirm that none of our schools are going, having plans, athletic teams or any groups have plans to travel out of state during spring break?
Yeah, none for spring break. The only thing that they have is they might have a previously scheduled game with a local event at this point, but there's no travel out of state or, or none.
What about, do we have a lot of hand sanitizer and?
Mr. McCamey, do you want to give them an update on our supplies and materials?
We're working with our vendors. Right now, they have plenty of materials. Our schools have plenty of materials. We're warehousing all we can. I, I don't foresee that changing, but when it does, we'll be just like everybody else. We'll have a limited amount. We haven't done for about a month or two. We're lucky. We only warehouse so much though, so.
Are we having our custodians going through the rooms and using the spray machines that we have?
At least once a week, every, every room in the building.
I have a question. If, if we close the schools, we're going to got one day left, right? But if we close it without permission from the State Department of Education, we would have to make up the days.
That would be my assumption, yes. If we close without something coming down from the State Department of Education, I don't know whether there would be a provision for us to file for a waiver or not. We haven't gotten that far on, but...
But we could file a waiver for the three days. I mean, there's been precedent to wear for flu infestation, they'll give you that three-day waiver.
Right.
Oh, when we've already used those?
No, no, no. We've, we've not, we've got one day left that we can, a discretionary day that they could close for any reason, and then we can ask for a three-day waiver, which would more likely than not be granted, but that still only gives you four days that would be there. You know, I heard coming in today, they have the first reported case in Knox County that's there. And I think I sent an email out to Tim last night, I think I copied everyone on. The problem you get is the mobility of the students beyond us. Just because we cancel a field trip, you know, I know that I have seventy-five girls, K through twelve, that are going to these out-of-state, you know, AAU or club tournaments. And the one I went to last week in Louisville had seven thousand teams, almost a hundred from out of countries, from other countries that were there. And you're there smacking hands, there were no preparations that were taken, and you worry, you know, we can't control...
Well, Dr. Parrott has said time and time again, and I agree with him, that our students are safer in our schools than they are, they are being home and then traveling and going to Jump Jam, to the mall, to theaters and things like that, which I'm sure some will do. If we do let school out, I don't think the majority of them will sit at home and quarantine, quarantining themselves, so.
But the Governor's going to have to step in and make some sort of a leadership decision at this point because of the sheer number of events that are getting canceled. When you suspend athletic seasons like for the NBA, canceling the NCAA tournaments, you know, the University of Tennessee's closing, you know, when that's happening all around you...
Well, TWS double A has put a limitation on the number of people that can attend with each team, the girls' basketball tournament.
Oh, sure.
You know, twenty-three per team, which it consists of administrators and close family members, but even with that number, I don't know how many family members you can include.
No, it's, it's just not, I mean, he, there's going to have to be some uniform direction that's given because we're not going to be able to withstand the public pressure that comes both ways. Because you have a segment that says, oh, this is, this made up, this isn't here, and then you have another segment, why can't we already close? And, you know, I think the public needs to know that we need some direction and guidance from the state level because I think it needs to be coordinated through the Governor's office, and we can only do so much.
Didn't, didn't the NCAA?
They canceled. It's totally gone.
SEC tournaments canceled.
No, no, the, every, all sports, all NCAA sports are canceled through the first year.
That the state of emergency that the Governor issued today gave us some leeway in making our own decisions.
We have not heard anything from the State Department of Education about that. And I think Dr. Parrott has reached out to Dr. Schwinn about this, and I don't know that he's had a response.
Because we, I got asked that question today, if the state of emergency was enough. And the answer that, that I would give and that I have been given is that there needs to be a more definite statement that he's now extending that to the Boards. But the University has taken the position that the state of emergency gives them the ability to, to make waivers, to close, but he has not specifically said that. And I think the collective reasoning from the legal community is he needs to now say, I'm going to give the local Boards of Education full breadth to waive testing, end of year testing, to just stop school. I think what you're going to see at the collegiate level is I doubt UT will go back into session. I think they... I think they will figure out a way to do everything online, grade where they are, and just be done. I would be surprised if they, because so many are going to go from spring break, transfer, come back in. We need some statement from the governor's office. And I think we'll get that in the next couple of days that says, we're going to let each LEA make a decision to close. Or he could simply say, I'm going to unilaterally close all of the schools, which would be preference.
Williamson County has closed.
Williamson, Wilson, Lebanon City, Dixon County, Battleground Academy, Lighthouse Academy.
But isn't it just for-
Knox County is closed tomorrow.
But isn't Williamson County just closed today and tomorrow, and their spring break's next week? Then they come back in?
I'm not sure. There may be.
Then they come back.
All those are Nashville-based schools.
Except for Knox.
And Knox was closing tomorrow to clean the schools, and then they have spring break next week. So if they, they'll be off for a whole week at midnight.
And I think they're looking at that as their opportunity to train their teachers, to get their teachers ready to go to an online format. You know, because it's fortuitous that some of these schools have a spring break coming. And I think they're going to use that to say, I don't anticipate Knox coming back after spring break. I think they will-
I think they're going, if they're going to close, I think the governor will have to do it statewide.
Was the person who had it in Knox County, was that a student at UT, a student in the school system?
That I don't know.
They wouldn't release that parent.
It was a girl just come back off a cruise. She'd just come back off a cruise.
Dr. Parrott just texted Mr. Snyder, or Mr. Snyder just texted me, to say, Dr. Parrott evidently is watching the proceedings, that he has contacted the commissioner about this, but the commissioner has not gotten back to him yet.
Yeah.
Okay?
There's an awful lot unknown right now.
When it's the speed that's happening so quickly.
And it's like Greg said, you could close school, and it's just like having spring break. You know, you've got a week off, but they're still going and doing what they normally would do instead of taking this as a serious thing. You know, I met with a girl today, and she said, they're going to Disney World next week. And I'm, you know, not that, I don't understand that when you've got this situation, you know? But that's her. But if you've got people doing that, still interacting and crossing paths with people that have come from overseas and different cultures and so forth, you don't know what you're meeting with, so.
See, I probably look at it from a different perspective because right now, it appears that the young people are faring much, much better than the elderly people. And what my greater fear is that you get into an elementary school situation, if one gets it, everybody gets it. There's just no way that we can stop that. It's just the way it works. Same thing in an athletic situation, in a locker room. If one person gets it, everybody's, the sickness is going to get everyone. It's them then taking it home to their grandparents, their, you know, older relatives, older neighbors, who do have a much higher mortality rate. And I think part of our responsibility is, I think the kids are going to be okay, but I worry about it getting in and they become a conduit to getting, because they are our greatest group here in the county, other than the employers, where they're put into a close-knit environment. And so I'm not so much worried about our students as our students becoming the way that the virus spreads to the community that needs to be protected the most.
And there's not enough testing being done. We don't know who's got it and who doesn't have it. That's the real problem behind that.
Parrott pointed out to us, too, it wasn't the students that caused closure of schools. It was a lack of staff. And so as these kids can handle this and they pass it on the staff, they don't handle it as well.
Well, right now, our absentee rate with employees, I think he told me that initially this morning, there was just like 20 employees out. Now, it climbed up as we, some other people put in for sick leave. So we don't know whether more people got sick during the day. But it's been very manageable as of right now, okay? As far as the number of employees out. But typically, when we do call off school for flu, that's one of the factors. It's not just the number of kids that are out, but the number of faculty members that are out.
One thing that concerns me is the children and their meals.
We've got a plan. We have a plan to address, and I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. But we're working with Ms. Burl on trying to, we're going to have, give cafeteria employees the opportunity to come in, if we have school off, to prepare meals and maybe work with the bus contractors to deliver those meals, okay? Out into the community. Now, what I'm saying, that's not, that's not set in stone yet, but that's something that we're looking, looking to implement. Ms. Burl, do you want to make a comment on that?
No, but the state has given us guidance. And it looks very probable if we are out of school, that they'll certainly help us out, those instances of work with us. They're very flexible on that. But given us a very clear path and a very quick path.
That's good.
And Greg, my assumption is there's nothing that we would need to do collectively to support, that you and Dr. Parrott and Eric can make this decision and just kind of keep us informed as to what your decision is. You don't really need any guidance from us.
I mean, I've called a couple of you to ask you if it's okay. I'm not going to get out there on that limb too far.
The governor tells you to close it, you've got your directive right there.
Well, yeah, I understand that.
I'll say publicly, I trust you and Tim.
Well, that makes me feel good.
That's why you're in the position you're in. If you feel like it's right, do it.
It was a very frank discussion yesterday, and I think they covered everything.
And we appreciate you being here, Dr. Burl.
Well, I just listened.
Now, we got your opinion on a few things.
Okay, anything else from the director's report?
No, sir.
Student members' report.
Good catch.
Hello, board. We have had an interesting few weeks at Anderson County High School. But I would like to start out with something that I find very important to our, our school at least, and important to our band program. The band is having a mattress sale. I know we lost an hour of sleep this past weekend. And if we do end up getting out of coronavirus, I know for coronavirus, we will all want to sleep in. So what better way to sleep in? It's been that time. They are our brand new mattresses from the Anderson County Band. We will be having this sale on Saturday from 10 to 5. So please take a picture of this if you would like to. We have coupons. I have some here, and please sure to mention my name. That is Gabriel Watson, if you come in, so that you get that discount. All right, back to the rest of the, what's happening at Anderson County High School currently. We are gearing up for the junior ACT on March 17th. And we have had almost 40 students at a practice ACT this last weekend. So we are looking forward to improving all of those students' scores with our ACT boot camp that has been going on this week. We have had many kids come in, and they have learned a lot about the ACT, how to improve their score, and we've given them a meal. It has been a wonderful week at Anderson County High School so far. We also have the Mavs on a Mission Community Service Day. The Norris Lions Club is partnering with us so that we can have a service model called the Four Ts, totally, towards a totally traversable town. It is where students will, get this, they will impersonate in the best way possible, the disabled so that they can walk around the streets and make sure that our towns are safe for those who are disabled, so that they will be able to live more full and wonderful lives. So the Moo Crew is also, and the Code Breakers also, are helping the rising freshmen next Thursday, provided that we are in school. And we hope to give them a wonderful time at Maverickland and show them what a wonderful time high school can be. Thank you. And I have coupons. See me after the meeting.
Are you going into sales when you-
I don't plan to. What do you plan to do?
I plan to go into nuclear engineering.
Hello, from Clinton High School. We do not currently have a mattress sale going on, although I can definitely see the appeal. Might call you up on that. As far as the junior ACT, we do have many students going into that. Of course, required to be preparing for it better than they have in the past with the ACT study sessions held by Ms. Merriman. A lot of students are getting insight from teachers that are one-on-one studies and so that they can max out those scores. And whenever they do try for that highest composite, they'll be more prepared for that. On a college level, we did just have one student get accepted into the West Point Army Academy from our school. Our name is Caleb Palaio. We do have a couple others, but we're waiting on news for that. But we do have one guaranteed West Point nominee. In addition, we have many students finally getting their enrollments into colleges. Looks like the turnout has been excellent for our senior class. A lot of them who are going to four-year universities or using TN Promise and getting that two years free and then going on to either a full-on career or a technical school. And direction from teachers, Ms. Merriman, and our principals and staff has been very beneficial with that. We also currently have, not sure if it's been canceled or not as of yet due to the recent turn of events, but our band, similar to this, is, the mattress sale is doing something called a color run so that they can promote school morale, despite its falling due to the recent events. But so that they can raise money for the band and then invite everyone to come for a small price and hang out and really boost the ethics that are going on within the school. And that's the main news for Clinton High School.
Clinton, both the girls and the boys' basketball teams had very successful season. How's that, how's that been for the high school?
It has been very, very exciting. As a matter of fact, we actually had them tour the hallways. And because it was, because it was such a high rate of success in comparison to previous years, we gave them a lot of praise. And it was definitely a morale booster for our entire student body, given that, you know, years past, we haven't always been as successful. And this year was definitely a turnaround on that.
I think this is the best year that any of our school system has had since, let's see, 2004, when you made the substate.
Statistics on that, sir, I'm not aware of.
It's, I thought, I thought Clinton had a fantastic season. This year, both boys and girls, as good as I can remember in a long time. So well done. Well, bye.
Thank you. I'll be sure to let the coaches know that.
Players, coach, not coaches.
Thank you, boys. Committee reports. Budget committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget committee met Monday night. We only had one appropriation. It's a record. And that is an appropriation for our after-school program. That's $10,645. That was approved by the budget committee and forwarded to the full board for approval. And I so move.
Second?
Move second approval of appropriation 1A, discussion. Not pro-call vote.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Gillenwater?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burl?
Aye.
And who seconded?
Pick somebody. Who seconded that?
Was it you?
I didn't, but go away, they don't.
Thank you.
We have several transfers. These are all just mid-year, kind of catch-up adjustments to various budgets. So it's kind of a long list, so bear with me. 1A is $289,170 for the retirement accounts. 2B is $231,000 for educational staffing solution adjustments. 2C, $43,600 for medical insurance adjustments. 2D is $20,000 for vocational medical insurance adjustments. 2E, $638 for fast-track program budget adjustments. 2F, $18,600 for retirement benefits. 2G, $65,805 for the nurses' program adjustments. 2H, $12,165 for adjustments in the instructional support program. 2I is $2,600 for adjustments with the special education program. 2J is $2,050 for adjustments within the vocational education support program. 2K, $2,095 for adjustments in the technology program. 2L is $110 for adjustments in the director's schools' office. 2M, $69,710 for adjustments within the office of principals. 2N, $24,000 for adjustments in the budget, or the business office. 2O, $36,740 for adjustments within the plant operation department. 2P is $22,862 for adjustments within transportation. And 2Q is $10,645 for after-school fees collection for the companion program. So those have all been approved by the budget committee and forwarded to the full board for approval. And I so move.
Second?
Move second approval of transfers 2A through 2Q. Q, discussion. Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And a big thanks to Julie Minton for taking care of that now rather than later. So we won't be doing that later. The next item is to approve the four budgets. These are the federal budgets. One for Head Start Fund, one is Early Head Start Fund, Technical and Training and Technical Assistance Fund, and the United States Department of Agriculture Fund. These are all federal programs, they're all funded. It's money in, money out. This is not county funds. So I assume we can take all those at once and approve them. They're not appropriations, so.
They're not appropriations.
Well, I would move, I would move that we, that we approve the Head Start Fund budget, $2,411,411. Early Head Start Fund of $1,389,139. Training and Technical Assistance Fund, $28,881. And the United States Department of Agriculture Fund of $128,800.
Second?
Did that, did you include the central cafeteria?
I did not. That's going to come later.
Okay.
Right, Mark, we don't need to approve that tonight, right? Or would you like us to?
That would be, it's ready to be approved.
Oh, I'll add that to the motion then, the cafeteria.
These are all.
Yeah, let's do the federal, and we'll do that one separate. This is all federal money. Well- Yeah. We'll, we'll, let's do these first, and then we'll do that one separate.
Okay.
So the motion is for the 145 funds.
I seconded.
Motion made and seconded, we approve the 145 codes, discussion. Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And the last item would be to approve the Central Cafeteria Fund, 143 Fund. That's $4,01,398. And I so move.
Second?
Move second approval of the Central Cafeteria Fund, 143, discussion. Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That is all from the budget committee.
Policy committee.
Policy committee met on Monday night, and we had four policies to review. The first one is a new policy, it's called Threat Assessment. We had to develop threat assessment teams, and we have that. And now we have to have a policy to back that up. And this is to foster a safe school environment for the students and the staff. And the committee recommended approval on the first reading, and I so move.
Second?
Move second approval of policy number-
3.204.
3.204, Threat Assessment.
3.204, discussion. Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Our next policy was 4.302, field trips and excursions and competitions. And we, the committee, determined we should hold that for more clarification. So- So, we don't need a vote on that. The committee just recommended holding it. Our next policy is Graduation Activities, 4.606. And the committee recommended, can you click on that one, Mr. Deal? Recommended? Going down. Okay, so we're getting deleted. But the policy, the committee recommended approving, removing, graduation activities organized by the district employees shall not be religious in nature. The content of any student's speeches shall not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school, employees, or the board. And the committee recommended approving this policy on first reading with this change, and I so move.
Move second approval of policy 4.606 as amended. Discussion.
Just to be clear, we're not saying all that's okay. We were just saying that it's already covered in federal law and doesn't need to be included in our policy, so.
This is all first reading?
Yeah. I just don't want the phone to start ringing.
All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Our last policy is 6.411, and that's Student Wellness. And that is just kind of reviewing and updating all of the commitments to student health, student physical activities, student nutrition. And this was looked at carefully by the nurses, the coordinated school health coordinator, and the food services director. And the committee recommended approval with these changes on first reading, and I so move.
Second. Move and second is approval of policy number 6.411 on first reading. Discussion. Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
That's all.
Curriculum.
The Curriculum Committee met and to discuss, um, the.
Cafeteria?
Board scholarship things. And we, we tabled that, anything, anything going for this year, and we'll wait and bring it up at another time. So, there's no need to vote on, on anything. And this, we did not make any motion to move, change anything.
Okay. Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee met Monday to discuss the recommendation from the transportation directors that we approve the current transportation contracts for one year through 2021. A motion was made to accept that recommendation and seconded, and I will so move.
Second.
Move and second is to approve the transportation report. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Action item. Did you have anything else, Teresa, on?
No, sir. I did not. Thank you.
Action items. Approve ACS Head Start. I thought we did that.
No, we, we approved our budget. These are grant applications.
Okay.
These are, these are different.
2020, 2021, five-year baseline grant application.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for 2020, 2025 for the Head Start Program.
Second.
Move and second, we approve the Anderson County Head Start Budget 2021, five-year baseline grant application. Discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Our next one is the grant application from our delegate, the Oak Ridge Head Start Program. And I move that we approve it as submitted.
Second. Move and second, we approve the Oak Ridge Delegate Grant Application. Discussion. Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approve ACS Head Start and Delegate Self-Assessment Finding and Improvement Plans.
This is, uh, they took the findings that came out of the assessment plan that we approved last month. And they have written up their goals and plans for this program, and I move that we accept as submitted.
Second.
Move and second, we approve the ACS Head Start and Delegate Training and Technical Assistance Plans.
That was findings.
I'm sorry?
That was the findings. That was item C.
Oh. Self-Assessment Findings and Improvement Plans. Discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And item D is the Training and Technical Assistance Plans. And if you have a chance to look at that, that has tons of goals that they have written for the, uh, both programs, for the 2021 school years. And I so move, we approve as submitted.
Second.
Move and second, we approve the Training and Technical Assistance Plans. Discussion.
Dr. Burl, I'd like to commend the Head Start Program for the work that they put in, all these plans and budget applications they put out for us. They are a, a busy place after everything, doing a great job.
Ms. Hahn, would you like to say anything?
I appreciate your support, and I certainly appreciate taking back everything available to the schools. They are still, they're not, they're too far.
They do a good job.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approve revision to the sick leave payout.
I need to address this?
Yes.
Dr. Parrott made a, was discussing with the instructional team, a recommendation to increase the amount of money that we pay to our employees upon retirement for their unused sick days from $60 to $85 a day. If they give notice before March the 15th, if they give notice after March 15th, it would be $40 a day. This is an excellent incentive for our employees to let us know early enough so that we can make plans for the next year's budget. Uh, it's also an excellent incentive as far as, we have a number of employees that get, as they get closer to retirement age, they want to use their sick days because they don't feel like they're getting enough for them. And it really creates a challenge for our principals, especially if you have employees taking every Friday off or every Monday off to make a long weekend. So, um, and then when you look at what some neighboring school systems are paying out, I believe Campbell County's paying over $100 a day, Knox County is paying, I think, a similar amount. Mr. Foger, do you have any exact figures on what other systems are paying?
I know Roan County pays over a hundred.
So, that kind of brings us in line too with, uh, that's a big incentive for a veteran teacher especially. And if you can go someplace that pays a whole lot more for your unused sick days, we could possibly lose employees to that for that reason. So, that's one reason that, uh, I think Dr. Parrott wanted to make that recommendation to you all about that.
He did ask to extend this.
Till April 15th?
It's time only.
Okay.
That only gives teachers three days.
The late notice.
Right.
Cause I like the, I like the early notification, because when we go to interview, you lose the cream of the crop, and then people that hang on, and then it hits August and you kind of get the leftovers. Whereas this way, they know and principals can go ahead and make some, some good hires.
Right.
I mean, we approve the recommendation of Dr. Parrott.
Second.
Move and second.
Does that need to be an amendment to that right there, saying April 15th, or are we good with?
Yeah, he could say to, he could put that in his motion. It's April 15th this year only.
So, you were saying the director's schools may waive the March 15th deadline for giving notice if, or you just want to, where up here, where they, if they, retirement notice given by, instead of March 15th, by April 15th?
No, it's just this year. Just for this year.
Just this year because of the lateness that we're approving this? Okay.
So, approve as is, with the exception of this year, which they get.
Do you have that, Pam?
I do.
Okay, yeah, Pam's got the amendment.
She'll make it right.
Yes.
So, the motion now is to approve the recommendation of the director's school.
Right.
Discussion. More discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval revision to the retiree insurance.
In addition to the, uh, increasing the number, amount of money that we're paying out to the people who are going to retire, Dr. Parrott has made a proposal that an employee upon deciding to retire, if they have been a participating member in our health plan for at least three consecutive years prior to retiring, that we would continue to pay their insurance, the county's portion of the insurance for the next five years, or until onset of Medicare eligibility age, whichever comes first. And to be eligible to receive this retirement benefit, the employee should file appropriate retirement paperwork with the benefits office by March the 15th. Uh, so I'm assuming you'd want to change that to April 15th as well?
He didn't mention that.
He didn't mention that part?
Yeah, well, they couldn't do it by March 15th if they.
Right.
Don't tell you till April the 13th.
So, I think, I think, I think it's probably his intent would be to change that to April 15th for this year only as well.
Yeah.
That's also classified employees.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The Anderson County Board of Education agrees to continue to pay the portion of certified slash classified employees. We're telling you this for both.
I so move. Second.
Move and second, we approve the revision to the retiree insurance. Discussion.
I assume we did the math of what this guy's gonna cost. Julie?
I think the, uh, looking at the situation for those who, who would be out towards about $170,000. But that's not saying that everybody on that list would take advantage of that.
Other discussion. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Anything else to come before the board?
Mr. Chairman, we're talking about suspending the incentives for student perfect attendance. I'm wondering if we shouldn't suspend our incentive for teachers to, to not miss any days. That's a little.
Pam, I think Pam's got some information about that. I'm sorry.
We did. We sent information to the principals yesterday.
Same one.
That we will not do the sick leave incentive for April to May.
Oh, okay. Way ahead of me, as usual.
That's why you got the threes.
I think Dr. Parrott has plans to keep us informed on the changes that are coming. And I foresee lots of changes in the next few weeks, but I don't think we'll have anything until after spring break, so, so.
I don't know. A lot of things happening very quickly in the last two days. I mean, again, when you cancel basketball tournament, softball season, baseball season, NBA, soccer league, it's serious.
Well, everything's changing every day, so. We will ask Dr. Parrott just to keep us advised of what's going on.
I think we're doing a good job of getting information to the parents. You know, Skyler and the emails that are going out, because they're the ones that have the questions. The quicker we can give them information so that they can schedule childcare, what they need to do, they always appreciate that.
The information that we're, that's coming out though was so mixed, it's, it's hard to, it.
You don't know what to believe. You don't know what to believe.
No, you don't.
Yeah.
When I went to, I was up at Anderson County watching the first baseball game last night after working out. I go out and work out every, and one of my former students engaged me in conversation, and this is all a Democratic plot to make Donald Trump look bad. And we're all, we're all overreacting. We need to keep them in school. So, you get, you've got, you've got varied opinions on the matter.
You do.
I think that's where, that's all the people have very strong opinions. You know, these, these big entities like Walt Disney and, and the NCAA, they're getting all of the, the most up-to-date and accurate information. I just Googled what they will lose, the NCAA will lose on March Madness, $837 million. And you don't make an $837 million decision without putting a lot of thought into it. And that's not, and it's not to take into account the approximate $2 billion that will be lost by the cities that were hosting the events.
How about the NBA?
Oh, it's, the NBA will be, you know, over $50 million per night that they're out. So, I think that it is a real deal. And, you know, Dr. Burl hit it early, we just don't have access to the testing right now to, to give a kid the test or to give an adult a test. And so, you're kind of stuck in limbo.
That's why these students are getting concerned about their softball and baseball season. When they see big boys giving up and million-dollar contracts and stuff, they're afraid they're gonna lose their season.
I am too.
We've never been faced with this before. If you think about it, this is brand new, and we've never had to make these decisions. And there's a learning curve. I mean, we're learning as we go, and I think we're having a good dialogue. I think the directors are keeping us informed. They're getting good information from the state, and it's all we do is make the best decision. And we'll get some wrong, you know, and you just err on the side of caution.
Well, I know Dr. Parrott appreciates your all's support when, when he makes these hard decisions.
You all earned it, though. I mean, I, I mean, speaking as a parent, you know, you and Tim and Eric always make the right decisions. You always put the students first. What is it, every student, every day? I mean, that's not just a logo. It's the way you live and the way that you operate. So, I appreciate it.
And we're what you know when you screw up.
Very quickly.
I appreciate all the staff, you know, the Ward School that, that, uh, you know, that we've moved forward. And so, but we have to thank all the staff for that, too.
I agree with everything you said.